We're now in the work session. Back out of the executive session at 5:35.
Trustee Wilson arrived at 5:06, in case people were wondering. We have public, under public comments, I do want to kind of just talk about my apologies for that person who used vulgar language. And she didn't do it the second time. But if people continue to get a little agitated or excited, I was trying to find out just from procedural with some of the things that you can do. And one of them is, you know, call them out of order, but if they keep going, we can, like, recess. I don't want to, you know, call the police or anything, because we've never had to do that, and I don't think that will happen. But that's the first time I've ever had that occur in our meeting, and I apologize to everyone for that happening, and I don't think it'll happen again. On the consent agenda, we have the minutes of the work session, regular meeting. We have statements and checks. And then April, what, Treasures Report?
Madam Chair.
Or March?
April.
It's March.
Oh, March.
Madam Chair, I had a couple of questions. On the work session, on this page, I'm not sure which one, 69, it said I arrived at 5:11. I think I was here on time for that one. Maybe on somebody else.
She's taping that from, I can go back and listen.
Yeah.
She's taking that off of the, that had to be on the tape unless she, I'm just thinking, or, yeah, yeah. And I actually have it in my notes and stuff, too, so I can go back and look.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, if I could have that checked, I would definitely appreciate it, because I don't remember being here at 5:11. And then, basically, on page 76, it said I interrupted to assert the status of what would be what the last term of business was. If I have that correct. Item of business, there was.
Are you saying the work session?
Yep, some work session on page 76.
Page eight in the minutes, page 76 in the packet.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and really, for me, I don't, the correct word, it's just me. But the correct word would be, I inquired, actually, to learn what was the status of the last item, as it was not clear, as in the last status. I wasn't sure. So it wasn't an interrupt, because I believe I did say, Madam Chair, so I just, the issue was with the interrupted.
Any other comments? Send them in. Attorneys' report?
Can I do that later on before this work session ends? I'm still trying to highlight which ones need to be discussed.
Okay. Under new business, we have the approval of contract with the firefighters, with the term ending of 12/31/2019, and budget amendment, is that what, will be brought back at the next meeting? Is that what you want me to?
I would just make the motion that we approve the contract and the budget amendment items that are necessary to fulfill the contract. And then she'll bring back the detail for the next meeting. You're spending money that you don't have budgeted. If we do it that way, it'll be budgeted.
I'll say that'll be brought, a formal budget amendment, how's that? Is that a better term?
Yes.
Formal budget amendment will be brought back? Because we're so early in the year, there's enough funding to do that. Formal budget amendment. Item number two is the request approval of the updated social media policy and cellphone policy to be included in the Township Policy and Procedure Manual. Karen Wallin is here, she's on the committee question.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just one clarification. It says, you know, personal use of social media during work hours, that does not include your breaks and lunches. Just wanted to clarify that, because they're technically like not work hours, right? You're on a break or a lunch.
Well, they don't get breaks.
Whatever.
I'm just kidding, I meant that as a, because that's been a big issue for the last couple of years. But at lunch, yes, they would have the ability to do that at lunch.
So should we, is it clear then?
I mean, I think as long as like the working book, like exclude, like if the work hours doesn't include a lunch in our working, you know, our employee handbook, and I would imagine it probably doesn't, right? Do you know, Karen, in our employee handbook, like, does it exclude, or is it specific that work hours do not include your lunch hour?
I don't think it's even said that way, to be honest.
Okay. I mean, just if I was an employee and I read this, I would want to make sure, like, is it okay if I check Facebook on my lunch break or not? Because they're not work hours. I mean, we all agree on that, correct?
Right. Right, they, most employees punch out and they leave, they leave the building during lunch, so if they are on their Facebook page at lunch, then...
I mean, we pay some of our employees for their lunch breaks, right?
Most of our employees get a paid lunch.
Right, so, just, and, like, you're getting paid for that hour, so are they working or not?
They're definitely not working, they're eating.
Sure, absolutely, I know that.
So you're...
But if I was an employee and I, like, or if I was the employer, and I was really trying to get like my employee in trouble, I would say, oh, well, I don't know, you're still working.
So we should say excluding lunch, maybe?
Yeah, lunch hour or something. I mean, I don't mean to be picky, but it's...
No, but...
No, I mean, I need, I wanted to clarify exactly what you were saying by that. Whether you were saying that they shouldn't have the ability to do that during that, or they should have the ability.
I'm a flexi...
They should have the ability.
Okay, just to make sure everybody's on...
I'm a pretty lax employer if I ever was one.
No.
Madam Chair, I do have one question.
Yes.
And it was in regards to the personal electronic devices. And I want to make sure I understand the point behind it, so I'll just ask my question. If an employee was to get a text during work hours, that's, I'm not saying they should be texting all day, but I'm just saying, if they get a text during work hours, can they respond to it at all? If, you know, or if it's a family member, can they at least say, okay, call you back when I go on lunch? I guess that was my concern, because it looked, it looked as if they could not respond back if it was, you know, maybe a family...
That is not our intent.
Okay.
We understand, I mean, and a lot of our employees have young children.
Right, and that's where I would, that's what...
Or elderly parents who they care for on a regular basis, and they might, they might be expecting to hear from doctors, other family members, or situations to where they're going to need to be able to see that. What we don't want is their office, their work, to be interrupted for a long period of time. If it is something, we're asking that they leave their desk and take care of whatever business they need to, notify their supervisor, but not to be sitting at your desk continually on your phone texting why we have customers at the counter that need to be served, or phones ringing that need to be answered.
Okay, thank you, that clarified it, thank you so much.
Monica, too, on page 164, for personal electronic devices, it states that although discouraged, it's understood that personal use of electronic is sometimes necessary. So, because we understand that, especially kids, and now medical appointments are all by tech now, yeah. It does, though, on here, now that I read it, this includes but is not limited to social media, they should be doing social media on...
Where are you at?
On page 164, personal electronic devices? Because that would conflict with the one...
You're saying that you'd be silenced and vibrate, and you should only use them not frequently, and it says it's naming those sources, a different source of power.
But you should never do...
Should be silenced, da-da-da-da. So any discouragement of social media activity, social, or personal phone calls and texting is discouraged?
Well, I know it said this includes but is not limited to social media, but further, it says that social media is not allowed during work hours. But lunch is acceptable.
Lunch, yes.
So you might want to, you see, do you...
You getting this, Lisa?
Madam Chair.
Understand, just want to make sure we both remember.
Right, because it's mostly for tax, that's the purpose is that, because so many people communicate by...
Correct, correct.
Right?
They might message us something they need to do, so, I mean, not very often, but someone, if someone doesn't have...
Tax hack. Anyways.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just, I was thinking, in my, in my quick little jog to the restroom, something that the University of Michigan does that I really like is that they have all their employees, like, if you're going to say, I work at the Charter Township of Ypsilanti, they also require them to post, like, none of the opinions displayed here are necessarily those of my employer. I'm sure it's probably not like something that comes up often, but just to have people say, like, if you say you work at the Charter Township of Ypsilanti, to have somewhere in your thing that it's, like, you know, my opinions, if I post something about our lovely elected officials in Washington, that they're not necessarily the opinions of the Charter Township of Ypsilanti, because, do you know what I'm saying?
I understand.
You just add...
Well, it says that any online conduct that adversely affects an employee, township board member, township resident, or the township business interests may result in disciplinary action.
I know what she's talking about, just if you made a comment that's not...
Yeah.
No, you can as long as it...
But like adversely, I mean, I guess that word is so subjective, like, I might post something about, hold on, let me think of an appropriate example.
You can use me, go ahead.
No, I was just thinking, like, what if I said something on my Facebook about how I didn't agree with our president's latest tweet about Notre Dame and the fire, and what the solution should be?
But that's not the, that's not...
But that wouldn't necessarily be adverse.
Right.
Or, you know what I mean?
That doesn't affect this policy, because this is about employee, township board members, township residents, and businesses.
No, I understand, but this policy is about our employees using social media, right? So I think that just what I'm saying is that if you added a line that said, if an employee who works here posts something, or says that that's where they work on Facebook, you know, you can say where you went to high school, where you work, all that stuff, that just period, the opinions that I post on my Facebook are not those of the township. Do you know what I mean?
You could just have another paragraph.
Maybe, am I explaining it okay? Like, does it...
Yeah, you can have it right at the very end, but that's what you're saying, not to represent yourself.
You look like you're not, I don't, am I not explaining myself, Monica?
Madam Chair, yeah, I'm, yeah, well, first things first, I guess basically, third paragraph under section two.
What page?
That is page 163. It does say, although employees are not to represent themselves as spokesmen for the Charter Township Ypsilanti, township news that is deemed to be public information may be shared on personal pages. So with that, the first thing I interpreted is that they're speaking for themselves, if that's the case, because they're not the official spokesperson for the Charter Township Ypsilanti, that would be you, as...
That's what Heather was saying, that you need to distinguish that.
Yeah, just so like if some person who wants to buy a house here in, I don't know, some new subdivision, they're looking on Facebook and they see something, and they're like, oh, I know Lisa works there, and I know her from this high school person, and look, she posted that she didn't like Donald Trump, and I do, so maybe I don't want to live in the Charter Township anymore, because, you know, they're crazy Democrats.
So are you concerned about federal government?
I'm concerned about people, the public, seeing things that our employees post and misinterpreting them as our opinions.
You could just clean it up with a sentence that says, if you're posting public information, what Monica said is right.
Karen, your microphone is not on.
You don't, you don't need that, because if you're, if you're just sharing, like, you know, our board meetings, or Parker, or some event, or Rosie, or whatever. But if you're posting an opinion, what I understand how they're saying, and you could just had it on there, if you're posting an opinion, and you're saying that you're a township resident, you need to say that that opinion is not the township's official opinion.
Whatever, maybe I'm making a big deal on that.
I see, I see what you're saying, but...
Lots of, lots of places, public places have that.
No, I understand, I understand what you're saying. So it could be handled with one, one small sentence added to that last paragraph there.
It's all about opinion. You're posting an opinion, then you need to say...
Madam Chair, I guess my question is, if they're posting something and they do have an opinion, and it is related to something, related to Ypsilanti Township, and it is their opinion, and they do that quite often, do they need to put that caveat on every single post? Or do they need to just put it, I mean, I'm just asking, because this is a question that will come, I would ask this question, or do they need to just put it on their social media, period? And if that's the case, then just say, if we're talking about Facebook, they would need to put it inside that little, you know, character, that you get 80 characters to put it on, if it's Twitter, then they could put it inside their Twitter. And then I guess that would get into the question of, are we regulating their social media? And see, I don't, I don't know, those are questions I would have, you know, because I know employees are going to ask that question.
As long, as it doesn't adversely affect, according to the proposal, you know, any employees, board members, township residents, and businesses. But, I mean...
That's a separate issue from what they're saying.
Adversely affects the employee, the board member, the town, like, that's also so objective. Like, I might think that something affects me adversely, but you might not agree with me, you know?
Well, let me see, we reached this...
I just reached, I'll take my whole...
Lisa, because Lisa's part of my committee, which I'm very thankful for, we spent a lot of hours going back and forth on this kind of thing. This is not the first draft. The first draft that we were going to bring was basically telling them they could do nothing. And pretty much, no social media, mentioning anything, and the situation is, we have a lot of employees at our township residents, and they might want to mention that they did something with the township, or, and then we were telling them that they couldn't do it. I mean, so we were trying to come to a happy medium.
Would you please go to the microphone, ma'am?
I get so mad at the people who don't do this, and then I do it. The first draft that we got, one of the first things that we discussed was the fact that it said you could not make any posts or post any pictures about township residents. My first comment was, I am a resident, so, like, you're basically saying I can't post pictures of my children who are also residents, and, you know, and things like that. My personal opinion is that if you are on your personal Facebook page, and you're commenting on a political item, or I'm commenting on someone else's personal situation, I, I guess I feel like people will understand that that's your personal opinion. I'm not running a page that's geared towards any, like, particular, I guess I'm not sure what the word I'm looking for, I'm not running like a political page, I'm, I'm just me, on my personal page, and if I have an opinion about something, I post that. And I wouldn't necessarily expect people to think, oh, my gosh, just because Lisa said, you know, she's, I hate to use this, like, maybe with, you know, we've had that controversial new ordinance that we've been discussing a lot.
Yeah.
If I want to post on there what I think about it, I wouldn't expect that people would think that I'm speaking for all of you. I would think that...
So you'd say, as a resident?
Yeah, that's what, yeah, exactly. So I, I guess I'm not sure that it's necessary to require all the employees to make this statement every, you know, and then you guys sit there and think, okay, is this really political, or do, I mean, there may, you know, I think it's getting pretty subjective, like, to require people to do that.
Are you running that?
No, I'm saying, I don't think that it's necessary, no, I'm saying, I don't think that extra language is really necessary to have an employee say that. I think that you should, you know, I think people will understand that that's their personal page.
Madam Chair.
That's just me, so...
I just wanted to clarify that that would only be necessary if you say you're an employee here. Like, you don't have to tell where you work. I don't think even on my Facebook page, I say where I work.
Yeah.
You know, but I hear you're...
Yeah, no, I mean, I do, I have it on mine, where I work at.
Mine, too.
So, I mean, and the policy also includes board members, so, I mean, there's, there's also, if, you know, one of you want to post, which I think that's kind of been happening on some, you know, different groups, if you guys want to post, are you, do they expect, do people, when they read that, like, in the Ypsilanti area discussion, do they expect that you're speaking for the entire board, or do they expect that you're speaking for yourself?
Yeah, I think so.
So...
I have no clue.
I, I think that they, I, personally, when I read stuff like that, I don't think that they're talking for the entire board of trustees, I think they're speaking as an elected person, so, on their own. So, I just, that's my opinion, I don't think it's necessary to add that, so, but, of course, whatever the board, you know.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The only other thing I do want to mention is, on the cellphone use policy, the very last part of the policy where it talks about using cellphones in the vehicles, we had made the change in every other part of the policy except for this, that this includes both employees and elected officials, and I left the elected officials off at that point. I mean, there's not often, I don't believe that you guys actually use township vehicles, but we would, I would ask that, that amendment could be made, if the policies are approved tonight, to add the elected officials to that.
All right. Any other comments? Doug, are you good with?
I read it.
Okay. Thank you for your input.
I don't do Facebook, I have a face in the, my face in the board, but I, I think I...
So you can't understand it?
Well, I will say, these policies, we chose these two policies first, based on Attorney Winters' recommendation over a year ago, that we needed to bring these forward. So these have been, these have been a long time coming. We've met with the, I will say this, I put it in my memo, the committee met with the three full-time officials, and we made some changes after that meeting. We also met with both, with the union representation, so that the unions know, and they had actually talked to their people and brought back some concerns, and we were able to address those concerns, and both of the unions were very pleased when they left the meeting. So that always makes it easy when we feel like we can get the buy-in of the employees.
Okay.
You good?
Mr. Winters?
Karen, I think that, just to put these two in context, there are, there are some other policies...
Correct.
...that also make reference to certain types of misuse of social media that gave rise to why it was felt that maybe there needed to be an expansion of those policies to address the cellphones, for example, and social media. But there are a number of other policies in the policy manual that really go into some of the very difficult areas that we dealt with as a township a few years ago, and maybe at some point in time, I don't, I know, I know that you've been working on updating that all the same procedure manual, and that might be something that might be also a good thing to do in the, in your spare time.
No, the, the committee, I don't want to say too much, because I don't, if something happens, but we have plans, we're actually meeting a week from Monday, on additional draft policies to bring forward in May, and I will say that Travis, as IT manager, has actually put together a draft computer use policy, which some of this will be addressed in as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Number three is for the grant application, the Washoe County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for an environmental assessment grant, and not to exceed amount of $26,899.
Yeah, we, yeah, where we're at is Nathan Void, who heads up the Brownfield Redevelopment, where he's the staff person, has pretty much assured us that we'll get the $15,000, but there was other costs that were incurred that we have to do, that was required, and this, and so we're not, anyways, this is up to this amount, whether we'll get that amount, they'll know on May 2nd, what, because we ended up having to do lead testing and paint testing, or lead testing and asbestos testing, and radon. They don't cover radon testing, but they cover the other two, and so that's why it's more than the $15,000 that we originally thought we'd apply for.
And this is actually for a grant through Urban County?
Yes.
And they require us, because their dollars come from HUD to Urban County, and this is required of any grant that we receive from them, that we do all these tests. So that's why we're doing, it's at the community center, and it's for new flooring there, at the community center.
Madam Chair, just have one question. So, thank you, Karen, you actually helped me with that one, because basically, the Brownfield grant would be for $15,000, if I have it correct from what Karen said, and I noticed that the estimate of work is $28,701, because I had, because I had saw that the maximum amount for the Brownfield revenue or expenditure is $26,000. So that's why I got a little bit confused, but now she just explained it. So I'm assuming the rest of the amount over $15,000 would just come from township funds.
Well, we think, we're hoping, Nathan thinks that we'll get some of that, we can't get the radon, that's why you got the difference in the numbers.
Okay.
Between the grant and the Tetra Tech contract, which is number four under new business next.
Okay.
But he thinks that we very possibly can get more than the $15,000, so whatever that number on May 2nd they approve, will be that number that actually gets put into the grant application, or not in the application, in the actual grant agreement with them, and then we'll have to make up that difference, which is, we actually have it on the agenda tonight to pay for, up to the $28,701 to Tetra Tech. And then, and that's the worst-case scenario, because they'll bill us on an hourly basis and stuff, but we said, just to make sure we cover everything, so we don't have to come back to the board, you know, be, you know, conservative on the end of higher costs versus lower, and then they'll bill us out at an hourly rate based on whatever each one of those are.
My understanding is that Brownfield only would give $15,000, and they changed their rules till they'll go up to more, but they won't say exactly how much, so... Mr. Winters, do you have any comment on that?
Well, yeah, Karen and I talked about this today, I talked about it with Nathan today, and I think we're all saying the same thing, except the numbers kind of slightly tinker a little bit. He, Karen and I were talking, I just got off the phone with him, and he said that, that his calculation was to apply for $25,061 with the Brownfield, and that, that he would try to get the full $25,000, township being possibly liable for that, $3,000, $637, I know that might number, that might differ a little bit slightly, but those two numbers I just gave you, the total, the $28,701 that Monica mentioned in the Tetra Tech contract, so he encourages us to ask for the $25,000 plus, and guaranteed the 15, and try to get as much as we can towards that 25 number.
So I think that plus is in there, correct? So we're all settled, and then the budget amendment is for the higher amount as well. All right. Number four is a request of approval agreement with Tetra Tech for the Phase 1 environmental site, and this is not to exceed amount. This all goes together. I should have mentioned also that the Superior Township is going to contribute some dollars towards this, $5,000 or $3,000? Just to...
$5,000 is part of the CDBG, the actual purchase of the flooring.
Right. But it's kind of like a regional, to show that it's more regional.
Facility.
The next item is the Friends of the Rutherford Pool is in order in the amount of $5,000. Any questions on that? I know that Angela King and Angela Burgess worked together with, is it Weiss, is that who, yeah, John Weiss from the pool, in order to come up with the agreement, and he's already signed it. So if ours is $5,000, they will get an additional match of $5,000, so contribution's actually 10, but we're only paying 5. There questions on that? No? Mr. Winters, do you have any comment on that?
No, we actually have the, also, the copy of the Certificate of Liability Insurance, we're also named as an additional insured, and I think there's a pretty interesting array of programs that are going to be available there, the Rutherford Pool, I'm not sure what the Baby Bubbles program is, but it sounds pretty, I'm sure well-intended, but it sounds like it's going to be a lot of fun for the residents of both the cities, township this coming summer.
All right. Next is the request of Michael Rasic for authorization to seek legal action to abate, so this isn't necessary, it is necessary. Usually we say if necessary, but this is necessary because it's going to abate the public nuisance for the property located on Ecorse Road? Or is that right, the Padlock case? On Poplar Road, Polar, Poplar, says Polar, Poplar. Poplar.
Good evening.
Michael?
This is a drug nuisance padlock case, 6934 Poplar Drive. That's in the Rosewind subdivision, just north off of Merritt and Martz Road, east of Tuttle Hill. The Sheriff's Department's Community Action Team, acting on a tip, opened an investigation of a subject that was residing at that address, 30-year-old guy who was the son of the owners of the home. He lived there, and over the course of time, they watched him on surveillance selling what turned out to be heroin and fentanyl out of the home, and also taking it from the home and meeting people in parking lots all around town, selling it. And they eventually arrested him, executed a search warrant at the home, and confiscated quite a quantity of fentanyl from him. And there is an open active felony narcotics trafficking case pending against him. We were notified, we immediately began the background investigation work to initiate a civil padlock case. And I'm sure you all know that fentanyl is the synthetic opioid that dealers are mixing with heroin. A lot of people that have substance use disorder think they're buying heroin and often end up buying fentanyl that kills them. And last year alone, 80 people in Washtenaw County died from opioid-related overdoses. That would fill almost half the seats in this room. So this person had been selling quite a bit of it throughout town. And in talking with Danny McLean earlier today, he informed me that when the process server went to the home to serve the homeowners with the civil lawsuit, the target of the investigation answered the door and accepted the paperwork and promptly called our attorney's office, trying to negotiate something before mom and dad found out. So the process server was sent back, and the parents were then personally served and are now well aware of what's going on at that property. That's the background on this case.
So he, this person was arrested, or they, then they're going to go to trial and?
There is a pending case, and I don't know at this point if it's going to be done in state or federal court, but there is a pending felony distribution case against this individual.
Was it, was it a young child? No.
30 years old.
Okay. All right, thank you, I just-
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments on that? The next item is for the public nuisance property located at 1474 Ecorse.
We were in meetings recently because our planning office and our planning consultants and our elected officials and many people in the community have been actively involved in some master plan strategies and some efforts to clean up the Ecorse Road corridor. And during a recent conversation, this building came up, and we've chosen to aggressively go after the property owner. The history is, it may not look at from the road, but it is a three-level building, two above ground and one half above and half below ground. It first came on our radar in OCS three years ago, in January of 16, when we passed the vacant building ordinance, and the owner failed to register. So we did a search warrant, and we inspected it. We caused them to make some cleanups on the outside, and they took care of a blighted sign structure that was outdoors. And then since then, they've kept it secure, and they kept the outside generally clean, but the building has been sitting vacant and rapidly deteriorating. We renewed that vacant building certification three years in now, and this time, we ended up suspending the certificate of occupancy. There are, because of the cessation of maintenance and the deterioration, it's a fire hazard, it cannot be occupied. The owners out of Detroit have been put on notice, and it doesn't appear as though we're going to get any cooperation. So we've asked for your consent to engage legal services to cause this to be abated, either by repair and bringing it up to minimum standards, or by demolition.
Mike, I remember last year Neighborhood Watch had brought up issues about the exterior, and you finally got those resolved. That took a while, too.
Yes. This is part of a, lack of a better term, a strip mall-
Mm-hmm.
-on the south side of Ecorse Road, between Ford Boulevard and Harris Road. And several of the retail stores in that strip mall are in less-than-stellar condition, so this is a focal point for us right now, as is Ecorse Road and East Michigan Avenue.
You don't want another Galt Village, yeah.
Correct. And we're putting a lot of effort now into Ecorse Road so that our planning and community engagement strategies are aligned with what we're doing to try to abate what's out there, to make improvements and set the stage for the future. This will not be tolerated there.
I also recall a lot of parking in that parking lot, a lot of parking, like vans and trucks and stuff that were there for a long time. And I know residents in that immediate area have called regarding this, and Neighborhood Watch has come up.
Yes.
I think it could be a thriving place, you know? I really do, but-
It all comes down to management and whether or not you care.
Correct.
We have not been able to get a successful communication and engagement with the owners who are from Detroit.
Other questions or comments regarding that? The next item is, thank you, Michael, is to purchase agreement for DTE for the installation of two wood poles and one LED fixture. And this is on Anadega, and this came out of a meeting that Clerk Rowe and I and Monica was there for the traffic, they have a traffic committee there? And this came out as a recommendation out of that. So there's two poles because you need another pole in order to, it's above ground, so you have to add another pole in order to lengthen the wire. I know enough to be dangerous, in order to get it to the actual light pole. Did I say that correctly?
Mm-hmm.
Any questions on that?
I was just curious, do you guys know if the homeowners at that corner are aware of this?
I know Julian's here, I don't know if they run-
There's not a homeowner right there.
Right on the corner there?
Not, mm-mm.
I'm looking at their house.
None on their side, none on that side where the light's going.
Oh, I see arrows on the other side. Two dots on their, their side of the street.
Yeah, they don't want it at the intersection. They want it at that second. They want it farther down, because they say they can't see people coming around the curve, so.
And the only reason I asked is I remember, I can't remember if it was that street or another street, but I remember that one of the residents that live on the corner there, they also have cameras on their own personal property facing outward. So I just didn't know if, like, it would just be prudent to consider that as an option, since it's kind of what we're doing these days.
An option to put a camera on that pole?
Yeah. I mean, and you all know I'm not really a big fan of cameras, but it's a thing that a lot of people are asking for. So if we're going to go ahead and do the work to put the streetlights up, like, I didn't know if it was something that they would be interested in having, or-
We always want more cameras, so.
Yeah.
They're always there asking for cameras. And, you know, you can't have cameras facing the neighborhood, but anytime you could put cameras in-
To the entrance?
Right.
If you, if you're going to do, I mean, you know, I don't know what we have to go through to get that done, but-
So this is the intersection that was affected by the change in-
Right.
-US 12 and wired roads.
Right.
So it caused a lot more people to go in there-
Right.
-come in and out of there, correct?
And it's very dark.
Yes.
Trying to, and I think it was a month ago, we had actually, actually, an accident. I don't know how, I don't think it was real bad, but still, you know, it was just very dark trying to get out. And when you come in, you know, you enveloped-
There's a lot of traffic now, right?
Yeah.
Because of the changes?
Yes.
I mean-
Lot more traffic. Clerk Rowe?
Justice Gerald does raise a good point, maybe, because it will be in their backyard. Maybe we should check with the, it's kind, this is kind of weird. We always put them at intersections, but the committee didn't want it in the intersection. They wanted it, that's why you have to have the two poles. If it was just the one there, because they're running it farther down, it could just be the intersection, but with one pole. But they said because of the curve that comes around there that they couldn't see. That was the big issue, so. But it is going to brighten up those, those people's backyard.
Which they might like, but, you know, I just didn't know if they were aware that it was happening.
Yeah, and I don't know either.
You know, we usually send out like a notice if it's like a neighborhood thing, cameras or whatever.
They put a reflector up so that it doesn't shield backwards into people, you know, how they do that.
These are, you know-
They can't do that with LED?
Well, I don't, I'm not saying that they can't. I've never had one on these kinds of lights. These are like the Grove Road light, you know, these are the big, you know, these aren't like a decorative light. Yeah, these are the big arms, so, I don't, yeah, I don't know. Do you know who lives there, Julian, or not?
Um.
You guys, maybe you could, well, maybe I'll just email the person I'm working with on your committee and just ask her if she could get, check it out with them.
Connie?
Yes, thank you.
Connie, yeah.
Madam Chair, I did have a question about the camera. There may already be one there. I could have sworn when we-
They should-
Yeah, because five entry points, and so that's one of them. Okay, all right, okay.
Oh, you have like the three there? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, I mean, it, well- Yeah, to answer your question, trustee Rowe, Gerald Rowe, when we originally did the pilot program with the cameras-
Yeah.
-it was, the cameras were placed at the five entry and exit points of West Willow, and Anadega is one of the entry and exit points.
Okay, so it kind of points down to the entrance there.
Where is it at there, Brad? It's not on a light, right?
No.
It's just somewhere on a pole there.
It's on a pole-
So the current pole wouldn't be-
It's on a pole between the north of, the northeast corner of Anadega and the Service Drive, and it's pointed south at the intersection.
So it's like across the street, like diagonal from the red dot?
Between the eastbound bypass and the Service Drive, east of Anadega, and it's looking into the neighborhood.
Gotcha.
All right, because we'll just verify that the resident is okay with it. The next item is to, just to set a public hearing date at 7:00 for the creation of a security camera special assessment district for the Cliffs condo.
This is one we've been working on a while, and Mike Razik's been working with. They have several homeowners association, but then they have a super one that oversees it. So there's super one ask on behalf of the Cliffs if they can have a security camera. And so it's taken a while because we ended up, it's going to actually go on a pole that they actually already own, so it makes it somewhat a little bit cheaper. We didn't have, we don't have to put up a light, we don't have to put up a pole. And I think they are working with the HOA, too, to upgrade both those lights to LED, which will save the HOA money in their utility costs. So this is the first step, is to set it, and then my office will send out a notice to the 250 people, which I was surprised that that many condos are in there. But anyways, they'll send that out to all the folks, just tell them that they can come and speak their piece at the public hearing on May 21st.
Mm-hmm.
Because there's so many, it's really, I can't remember the price, but it was relatively inexpensive, especially so they don't have to put up a light.
And this is petitioned by the association?
HOA. Super one. The super HOA.
And all the information will be in, when we actually have the public hearing. Budget amendment number 10? This is 10, seven, I'm sorry.
I think it's just, yeah, it's PTO, and it's the Tetra Tech and the grant stuff.
So the Anadega Avenue and the streetlights on there.
Yep.
PTO payout, and then we have the-
Tetra Tech and the grant.
Yeah. Questions or comments on the budget amendment? Authorization of bids, we have the request of Mike Razik for approval to seek sealed bids for the generator replacement at the law enforcement center, and that will be brought back to the board, of course. Questions regarding that? I think we're going to try to see if Washtenaw County Sheriff's Department would like to partner with this. We're not sure if they will, but we're going to find out, yeah.
We're going to try.
And then this will come back to the board. Question, Larry, do you have any questions on that? Doug, and I know, Doug, you've actually reviewed it, and-
Oh, yeah, it's been, it's quite a lengthy document, I think.
Well, I didn't, yeah.
Mike and I met with Matt and the other engineer from his office overseeing this project, and it's a two-stage process, they build a generator, then they have a contractor to actually install this, so it's quite undertaking. But all the bonds and other types of insurances that we normally expect have been put together in this booklet, or book, and I think it's in proper form to go forward.
Mr. Winters, would you like to do the attorney's report now?
Yes, I would. Sometimes you just don't know where to begin, because I know you guys get a lot of letters, and I know you keep all of them, because Heather's running out the door.
Travis reminds us of that.
And sometimes you don't know exactly what some of the, talking with Brenda and Karen and Larry, sometimes we do feel like the so-called gerbil and running around, because there is truly so much going on at one time. And I think time management becomes a struggle for all of us, what to prioritize, what to reprioritize, because it changes daily. Sometimes you have to deal with a personnel issue, or sometimes you have to deal with a public nuisance issue. You can't always put things on a back burner, so you're constantly struggling with how do, how do you use your time? And so there is a lot of time that's spent, I believe, on evenings and weekends, not just by myself, but many other people on the board, to just try and keep up with what's going on. And I think at the same time, though, be somewhat remiss not to at least be thankful and be blessed in some ways as to what is going on in this township, because 32 square miles is a lot of territory to cover, and there's truly a lot of different legal issues going on that's also affecting day-to-day operations in the township financially, as well as developmentally. You've heard us talk for years about the reimagined Washtenaw Corridor, and going forward with installation of sidewalks that are AD compliant, and the curb ramps, and et cetera. And this evening, I can say right now that I talked with Nathan Void again this past week, and that is going, and Karen and I met with him last Friday with other people from the county, and Matt Parks, and Charlotte Wilson, and this project is going to be bidded out this summer. It's going to go forward probably in the fall of 2019. We've learned a lot from this process of how to go about trying to acquire easements voluntarily. We have obtained all of the easements needed for this project to go forward with about a 10-foot, I was over there this morning looking at it, Camelot Apartments, who actually would stand, stand to also reap a significant benefit by being part of this project, has yet to sign a lease. They've been somewhat overreaching in some of their requests. We've made them our final, this is our last best, what we're willing to do. But without them, we can still go forward. And so we're going to do that, and I think it's a, it's a good thing for us to actually, I think Karen and myself emphasized to the county that we wanted this project to actually be done this fall, so we can actually see there's a tangible, immediate impact upon the corridor that's going to, I think, also be a good precedent for the rest of the Washtenaw Corridor. And in that context, one of the first businesses to finally have a viable plan to use the Old Farmer Jackson Building and step forward, it's a crunch- old Farmer Jackson Building and step forward is Crunch Fitness. And they say they have enough clientele that they can coexist with the other fitness centers, Planet Fitness. But, they are going to use over 24,000 square feet of the Farmer Jackson Building. And they're going to, they've already submitted the building plans. They're being reviewed. There's some issues that have to be dealt with to make sure that they bring this building into compliance with the existing site plan that goes back to 1997. But, it's just good to see someone who actually has a viable business plan that's going to perhaps encourage other development. The gentleman who's a developer, who appears to be the one that has the finances, I believe he told us he has an option to purchase the entire shopping center. Mike, I think he told us he had that option. And so, we think this could obviously be a good sign for this portion of Washtenaw Avenue in conjunction with the sidewalks to, again, make this more attractive. At the same time, I believe that we are now under contract, Mike. And I am looking towards you because you and Denny have been dealing with this more than myself, that the retaining wall behind Goff Village is now going to be ready to be taken down and replaced with the funds that were escrowed as part of the receiver. I believe that's now ready to go. I want to get that out of the way before we go into something else.
It's actually under construction, started a couple of days ago. Most of it's down already. And they're beginning the reconstruction.
And I say that because I believe that the estimated cost for that retaining wall may exceed $200,000. But, it's very important because of the homeowners' properties, as you can, if you're driven back behind there, you know how their backyards are kind of supported at times by their retaining wall. But, at the same time, but also be remiss if we didn't also mention that while the retaining wall is a separate issue that is going forward with those dollars, I'm not sure if the board has had a chance to really, I mean, many of you know, our building official, Dave Bellers, but he has taken over the building as, he's now the building official. And I think that he's done an outstanding job in that capacity. And he's got the right temperament, the right personality, and he knows the code. And right now, yesterday, myself and Denny met with Mike, Bill Elling, who's always like the, you know, he's always in a whirlwind. He's always like the Tasmanian devil. He's always doing something all the time, never stops. We met with him, Dan Campbell, the Fire Marshal, and Dave Bellers, because we're at a critical, critical impasse with the Goff Village. The new owner, as we kind of suspected, has not really been responsive to where we, we never had any kind of false illusions, but the court allowed him to purchase this property. And if it thinks could not go worse, I think to some extent they probably have. And we've documented everything possible. Dave Bellers has done everything possible. And I believe that we're at this point right now where we're, there really has to be a demolition order that's going to have to go forward on that property over there. It's just, the photographs are just overwhelming when you look at inside the photographs, what's going on over there. And we will be going back to court and maybe even requesting the court to make an onsite visit to Goff Village, much like Judge Shelton did when he paid an onsite visit to Liberty Square. Because until you see what's going on inside those property, vacant properties, it's part of our, it's a gateway to many parts of our, they're part of the township. And, you know, we've done everything we've possibly can to work with the owners, be it McLaughlin, be it Namdarr, be it Robert Hall. And I think it's basically at the point of no return. We continue to deal with other issues, like Mike mentioned before, with the public nuisance, the ones involving Poplar Drive. There are two other ones that I've shared with the board that I won't go into detail this evening that also have to do with LawNet being involved in seizing drugs. So, we have to continue to protect our neighborhoods throughout the township that at times have been victimized by some people that would set up shop. We have a zero tolerance and we've been very successful in obtaining the right orders from the court. And again, Lieutenant Morocco is here, and I know he oversees a lot of the individuals on the CAT team. And they also work hand and glove with LawNet. And they've just done a tremendous job. And not only are they seizing the drugs, the fentanyl, the crack cocaine, cocaine, they're also seizing loaded weapons. And again, for the officer's safety, anyone enters into these type of searches and seizures, you always have to go in with that knowledge that someone can be standing inside. The one incident, the person was upstairs flushing the narcotics in the toilet there. But, at the same time, you never know when they go inside, is someone going to have a, have a weapon. And so far, they continue to use extreme caution. At the same time, they are out there every day fighting hard to improve the quality of life for all of us. I'm jumping around because it's what we seemingly have to do when we go from development to public nuisance to issues like Goff Village. But, we also continue to have new infrastructure projects being completed, some getting ready to be started. The fire station parking lot is on the verge of being finalized. That was a tremendous infrastructure cost. It needed to be borne by the township board. I believe it exceeded $330,000. But, I think it came in under budget. So, there was still a cost savings there, but it was a significant investment that had to be made. We're soon going to be starting to replace the civic center, I mean, township roof here. It got delayed last year because we wanted to make sure we got it right. And there was an increase in the scope of services. And that should be going forward sometime this spring as well. We also have, in addition to the Crunch Fitness, you have the R&amp;L Carriers. They are the trucking company located off Ekor's Road and Hemrick Street. They've asked for, they want to make a significant expansion investment in Nipsey Township. And they're currently going through the process of having their plans reviewed by the staff. And they'll be going forward with a conditional rezoning to, again, make some significant investments into the township. They, sometimes they surprise you because they're kind of hidden off the main, Ekor's Road, their Hemrick Street's kind of hidden back in there. But, they have, I know that Karen, Brenda, and Larry have been over there. And they have quite an operation going on over there. It's located here in the township. And they're very, very, they look to the township as their number one choice to make this significant capital investment. And that's a, that's a good thing. Because, again, you see what's happening on the Whittaker Road Corridor, but you can't always see what's happening in some of the other parts of the township. But, it all comes together to increase job. They have very, very high-paying jobs over there, the R&amp;L Carriers. And I think they're also, they seem to always be continuing to hire. And they're looking for more, I believe, trained, skilled labors over there for the work they do there for these, in the trucking industry. I'm gonna stay in my, stay in my lane, don't want to get too outside what they do over there. But, whatever they do do, they pay well. We did close on the River Grove Townhomes. That was the 17.19 acre parcel that came to us through the Washtenaw County Tax Foreclosure Reverter process that in order for us to get a marketable title, we had to file an action to quiet title. We quieted the title. We have full control and ownership of that property. And it just so happened because I think at one of the board meetings, we went, there was talk about how the resurrection revival of the border-to-border trail that was going to be carried out by the county parks and recreation. There is even a plan showing that a portion of that would actually go through this piece of property. And talking with Matt Parks today, I think there's a lot of excitement now that the township controls this property. Because according to Matt Parks, there is no place in the county that truly has a border-to-border trail. This would be the first one that could actually occur. And so, again, that being located next to North Hydro Park, a property that now is under the control and ownership of the township, there are a lot of possibilities the township has in regards to this being utilized in conjunction with the border-to-border trail, possibly redevelopment as part of their Phase II development, or even an extension even of the North Hydro Parks. There's so many possibilities here that don't know exactly which one the board may settle upon now that you now have control of the property. That was the first and foremost. And now that you do, and the Grove Pathway is involved here, that may cause you to rethink as to what is the best use of that property. Cattering and Thurston, Cattering is gone. Bill Elling's kept you apprised in regards to that demolition. Thurston is well underway as well and should soon follow suit. So, those attractive nuisances will soon be gone. And I think the township leadership continues to oppress the state of Michigan as to what they're going to do about the funding needed for the Forbes Cleaners Site. That's still first and foremost on our list of projects. And there's continuing dialogue with all of the elected officials, not only with State Representative Ryan Peterson, but State Senator Jeff Irwin, State Senator Rebecca Warren has responded. And again, we need more clarity and more commitments and more clarification as to just when this is going to be put to the front burner and dealt with. So, again, this is kind of a kaleidoscope of all the different issues that are going on all at the same time. It's kind of like the little Dutch boy, you're trying to put your fingers in the dike, trying to figure out which one to go first. But, we couldn't do what we do without having the support of all the township staff and people I mentioned and other ones that don't always get included in the letters. They do a tremendous job for the township. And I think right now, going through the second quarter of 2019, we're still looking at things to occur at the ACM. We had a meeting scheduled for today that had to be rescheduled because of their time constraints. But, we know that they're moving forward, trying to convey the property from Red over to ACM. And we want to be involved in those discussions to make sure our interests are protected, especially as it pertains to the annual pilot payment that's made to the township. So, those are the highlights at the moment. And I'll keep sending out the letters as time allows and answering any questions you might have.
Any questions or comments, Madam Winters?
Thank you. I had a comment. I just wanted to make sure that I thanked Doug, Attorney Winters, and township staff for getting reimagined Washtenaw going. I know that's been a long-term project. And I know a lot of work has went into that. And that's gonna really change the corridor of Washtenaw and make it a lot more walkable for a lot more people in the township and also visitors. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Township Board did a great job. I know it started with even Joe Lawson and Charlotte Wilson and Nathan Vogt. Karen, Brenda, and Larry continued to believe in this. So, it was a really long, long project. That's, I think, the next one won't be nearly as long, but we learned a lot.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
They funded it five or six years?
Yeah.
Did they even fund it? And then thought it was hard to spend a little bit?
I'm not sure. I think the representative from Tetra Tech is here. So, if anyone has any questions regarding their contract, I just want to acknowledge that she's present. No questions? Okay. Well, then we can adjourn until seven o'clock. Yeah, the time is 6:39.